All right, I call the order of this regularly scheduled meeting for the 34th City Council on January 28th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Just a reminder of everyone in the audience to silence any cell phones or communication devices as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a qualm.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilwoman Lesa Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. It is my honor tonight to introduce Stephen Perrine from Good Shepherd United Methodist Church, who will give, deliver tonight's invocation. I invite all who are able to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Before I begin prayer, just a word of personal privilege. Just wanted to let all of the council know that the Dearborn Interfaith Network, area Interfaith Network is going to be having our second breaking bread together meal, and it will be at St. Paul Lutheran Church on February 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So if you're free and you are able to come, we invite you to come. Let us pray. God, our Creator and Sustainer, to you all hearts are open, all desires known, and from you no secrets are hidden. We come humbly to ask your blessing on our mayor, city council members. We pray that you would give these public servants wisdom and guidance as they carry out the duties and responsibilities to which they have been entrusted. Give them guidance in their deliberation this evening, and may they act with heartfelt care and consideration for all the people who make up this great city of Dearborn, Michigan. We pray for all the civil servants who help them in their daily operation, especially we pray for the police, fire, and other first responders whose calling may place them in difficult and sometimes dangerous situations. Surround them with your protection. As we pray for the peace and harmony for this city, so also we pray for a just and lasting peace in the Middle East and for all those who suffer in war, hatred, violence, and bigotry. We ask all these things in your most holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. All right. For my colleagues and then from some of the people in here in the audience, we're going to continue with our regular council meeting, but I just wanted to make note, we have several or a few acknowledgements of good things that are happening in the community as well in the city. So what we're going to do is we're going to read them through the record, and then once they're completed, we'll go down as a council and individually take some photos to have these people recognized for their, their great work. Mr. Clerk, can we have next item?
Item number four, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, acknowledging the outstanding achievements of the Economic Development Director, Jordan Tordy, who was recently recognized in Crane's Detroit Magazine in December 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, the 34th City Council acknowledges the outstanding achievements of our Economic Development Director, Mr. Jordan Tordy, who was recently recognized in Crane's Metro Detroit Magazine in December of 2024. Mr. Tordy has been, has been featured prominently in Crane's for his exemplary contributions to ongoing redevelopment efforts in East Dearborn. His expertise has been crucial in fostering the development of new and affordable housing in our area, significantly enhancing the community's growth and well-being. This acknowledgement has been unanimously supported by the council and has been given immediate effect. We extend our, our heartfelt congratulations to Director Tordy for his dedication and his service to our community. I know it's not done alone, but it's a whole staff and team, but we only had enough in the budget for one frame, and so you're going to see it. It was, it was money well spent by the council. So Director Tordy, we really, really do appreciate the work. Affordable housing and housing in Dearborn is a, is a major issue, and being in the forefront of it, we do appreciate your work. So we wanted to make sure we extend your congratulations and will come down for your award. Any, any other questions or comments on this item?
I'd just like to add-
Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to add that Jordan Tordy represents Dearborn very well. I've seen him present at the Michigan Municipal League, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. He and his team are doing outstanding work for our residents and our businesses here, but they're also doing good work at making Michigan stand out on the map. So thank you again, Jordan, for your work.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Okay, here and seeing none, a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item?
Item five, resolution by Councilmember El-Sawafi, supported unanimously, acknowledging Mr. Paul Goddard for his dedication to maintaining city sidewalking trails and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The 34th City Council would like to wish acknowledgement to Mr. Paul Goddard for his dedication to maintaining city sidewalking trails. Mr. Goddard has volunteered his time and effort in keeping the city trails clean and safe and accessible for the community for many years, and we'd like to thank him for this work. We also know that Mr. Goddard was unable to attend this evening. Councilman El-Sawafi, did you want to make a statement?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to express my heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Paul Goddard, who could not make it here today, for his exceptional dedication to our city's walking trails. Through his selfless volunteerism, he has supported efforts to keep our trails clean, safe, and accessible, enriching the lives of our residents by providing a place for them to walk, run, and connect with nature. Mr. Goddard's tireless efforts have significantly improved our community, and his eagerness to continue giving back speaks to his extraordinary character. His passion, generosity, and his commitment to making a difference are truly inspiring. Thank you, Mr. Goddard, for your remarkable contribution. You embody the best of our community, and we are deeply grateful for your service.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing and seeing none, a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item?
Item six, resolution by Councilmember El-Sawafi, supported unanimously, acknowledging Mr. Hussein Hashem for his active role in student education and bringing a positive platform to journalism in the city of Dearborn, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The 34th City Council wishes to acknowledge Mr. Hussein Hashem for his active role in student education and bringing a positive platform to journalism in the city of Dearborn. This citation was brought forward by Councilman El-Sawafi, and I did speak with Mr. Hashem earlier. Tremendous job that he has done bringing especially global issues to basic understanding for those that just want to get an idea of what's really going on. So we'd like to thank you very much for that. Councilman El-Sawafi?
Thank you, Council President. It is my pleasure to recognize and acknowledge the outstanding contributions of Mr. Hussein Hashem, a true champion of student education and a pioneering journalist in our community. I've had the privilege of working with Hussein during my time at Wayne County Government, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic, when he selflessly offered his social media news platform, also known as WhatsApp media, to help us disseminate vital government resources to our citizens. I witnessed firsthand his dedication to our community and his willingness to lend his expertise to support our efforts. As an excellent ambassador for the city of Dearborn, Hussein travels the globe, sharing our city's unique story and promoting our community with passion and pride. Hussein never hesitates to volunteer his time, resources, and journalism expertise to better our community, and his commitment to making a positive impact in Dearborn is truly inspiring. I'm honored to recognize Hussein's tireless efforts and thank him for all that he does to make our city a better place. Congratulations, Mr. Hussein Hashem, on this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you, Councilman El-Sawafi. Any other questions or comments?
May I, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
I've known Hassan, I think, for about a decade now. First of all, the greatest part of Hassan is his family, he's not Hassan. I want to put that out there. If you haven't watched his father's cooking show, you need to tune in. If you haven't purchased that cooking book, and his wife as well, who's written many children's novels, stories that I have for my daughters back home, and obviously his two daughters who are here today, and he has a third who's not here, but nothing like the precious little girls that we have at home. To Hassan, you know, you've taken the WhatsApp media, and you travel the globe, and obviously many people invite you to showcase what they have in their neighborhoods, but each time you're there, you find a way to reel in Dearborn and talk about the greatness the city of Dearborn has. And so to that, we're thankful, because you've become, you've become an ambassador for the city of Dearborn. Whether you're being invited to the TikTok conventions as one of the major Arab influencers across America, or whether it's you hosting your broadcasts and breaking down not only global issues, but local issues, I think more importantly. Whenever we talk property taxes, we call Hassan, we say, we need you to break it down on airbreak immediately, because people are going to call us with the questions. And so you're able to take very complex issues and simplify that. And so I think what you've been able to bring to the community, and I know on a daily basis, because my mom calls me and she tells me, and then she goes down with what she just heard on your broadcast. And so we know that you're the talk in many of WhatsApp group chats, you're the talk in the community, because of the positive information you have to relay and how you're doing real-time news that our community has been accustomed to with the yahbar, but you've modernized it. And you're building your platforms not only via Instagram or Facebook, but you're rising in YouTube and rising in TikTok. And being accessible on all those platforms has really been a great asset to all of us at the city of Dearborn. And to that, we thank you for being an ambassador, we thank you for being in the city of Dearborn, and thank your whole family for all the contributions that they have made as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. If I could, I think it would be remiss if we didn't also recognize you for your years on the Dearborn Charter Commission. Tireless work, a lot of work for several years, and I just want to acknowledge you for that too, because of all the dedication that you had going forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, hearing and seeing, no other objection, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item?
Item number seven, resolution by Councilmember Samudh, and supported by Council President Serini, recognizing and commemorating the Lebanese Student Association for its outstanding dedication to enriching our community, promoting cultural understanding, and empowering young leaders, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This resolution was brought forward by Councilman Mustafa Hamud, and I know that I supported it as a great organization. Councilman?
Yeah, so I know, at least myself, and I think the mayor as well, were members back when we were in undergrad. They're celebrating their 12th anniversary this year, and, you know, I appreciate the continued growth of all kinds of Arab-American organizations. They continue to provide spaces for members of our community to serve as ambassadors to college campuses everywhere. And one thing I'd like to recognize is, they continue to grow, which is very important, because, you know, as our community itself grows, as more people from around here or even nationally go on to college and receive higher education, it's important that organizations like this continue to provide spaces where people can keep their culture and educate others on that. So just going to read a couple of lines from this. So the Lebanese Student Association is celebrating their 12th anniversary this year. It's been an invaluable organization in fostering cultural awareness, academic excellence, and community engagement among students of Lebanese heritage in the broader community. They provide an inclusive space for students to celebrate and share Lebanese culture, traditions, and values through events, workshops, and educational initiatives. The 34th City Council hereby recognizes and commends Lebanese Student Association for its outstanding dedication to enriching our community, promoting cultural understanding, and empowering young leaders. So, and, and you know, like I said, it's, it's just, it's always nice to have social spaces on campus where, you know, you feel welcome, and I, I think there's a lot of other organizations for a lot of other groups, and, I mean, I remember when I first started in undergrad, it was very rare to come across like an Arab-American student organization. There was like ASU and LSA, that was basically it. So, and even that, like, you know, those were kind of new back when I was there. And now you've seen an explosion, and they have so many chapters now to all kinds of universities in the state. I don't even know all of them, but I just think it's really impressive that it's, it's not just in existence, but it's continued to last and it's continued to grow. So I think that's very important to recognize.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments?
Just want to make one comment.
Mayor?
You're looking at the founder of the LSA, the University of Michigan Dearborn, back in 2009 and 10, along the same, Hashem Hashem, who was the president at the time.
And I was a member two years later.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Full circle.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. All right, at this time, we would like to have our director, we're going to have the council come down, and Mayor, we'll have our director's presentation for him, and then we'll then have Mr. Hashem's presentation as well. So if my colleagues would like to step down there, we'll get this process going.
I was starting to-
I got it. I got it.
This class started in 2014.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
All right, ready?
We're over. Sorry. All right. One, two, three. Go ahead.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
You have to put it on work order.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stand in the middle.
You know what? I'll get it off to the line. I'll hold mine.
You guys ready?
All right.
You want to turn things back?
The first and the second.
We're using the camera, so we don't have to turn it.
Wait for the special ground.
...who are riding their bikes. We know that we want Dearborn to be a place where our current residents want to stay and hopefully, you know, live out the rest of their lives with their families. And we also want to make sure that we're growing and evolving and being a place where new folks want to live, especially young people. So I think that these upgrades and hopefully this investment will go a long way towards helping all of us reach that goal. So just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you all for your partnership.
Yes, thank you for coming and Rep Alaba Farhat?
Thank you, Council President, to the body. And I just want to uplift the partnership, really, that exists between the city of Dearborn and both myself and Rep Burns. I was joking earlier with a few of the council members, you know, a grant that's not on here, but I know the city received was $6 million for public safety and public health. And, you know, there's a really funny story here that I want to share for folks to understand the real, you know, relationships matter in Lansing. And as a city, we're really fortunate to have a good state senator and two state reps that work really hard, but also a mayor that knows the terrain up there. And so in the beginning of the budget negotiations last year, actually near the end of the budget negotiations, you know, Dearborn was slated for about $3 million or so to come down to public health and public safety. And it wasn't until a phone call to the mayor that then led to a phone call to the Senate Appropriations Chair. And, you know, the details to which of that call I'll leave to the mayor to discuss. But that led to the dollar amount being $6 million now. And that's real money that's going to go to supporting our officers, it's going to go to supporting public health here in the city. There's money now for sidewalks and pedestrian infrastructure. I mean, truly, I'll say Dearborn has situated itself with a great leader and just a collaborative mindset from the council and the mayor to capitalize on the federal funding that the state got and as well as capitalize on the new investments we're making. Even right now, you know, as, you know, myself and my colleague, Aaron Burns, are having conversations around the roads. We're talking about local road funding. Like, that's a conversation that matters. That's fixing these local side streets. Don't hold me to it. You know, politicians make promises. I like to deliver. But, you know, this is not a promise, but I think it's going to get done.
I hope so.
And, you know, in the new role, I know that I'll be assuming this year as the Democratic Member on the House Appropriations Committee, the Vice Chair, it's going to be a lot more of a focus on continuing to bring long-term, sustainable investments back to the city of Dearborn and back to the communities that we serve. So I just wanted to thank you folks for your partnership, just having a collaborative mindset where the mayor, the council, and the delegation work so well together. I think we look around and, you know, I think that's the envy of a lot of communities who might be having council meetings right now that look to us as that shiny beacon.
No, without question there. Rep Farhat, Rep Burns, I do appreciate it. I know definitely your collaboration, both of you with the mayor, has made a huge difference. We did appropriate that, that $6 million. Tonight, there's another half a million dollars. All that does is really, really take a burden off the taxpayers and makes transformative projects that we couldn't do in the past. So I think it's great, you know, raised sidewalks. I mean, we just got to make sure that your dad knows when he's riding his bike. It's going to be a little bit raised in some areas, but these things really make a difference. And we see it. I mean, Mayor, I'm sure you've seen how many people have called about the lightest stop signs, asking, everybody wants one. Everybody wants a speed hump in front of their homes. So it is working, but it can't happen without the partnership. So we want to thank you guys because it's not too often that we have our this close of a collaboration. As many people know, there used to be one state rep for the entire city of Dearborn. Now there's two and a little part of a third, or just two now, right?
No, no, it's just two.
Just two.
That one wasn't so bad, though.
No, the one wasn't so bad.
George and I would like to say that one wasn't so bad.
There you go. There you go. That's true. That's true. It is, you know, as things can continue to evolve, the fact that you guys are continuing to work for your city, we really appreciate it. So we want to thank you on behalf of the 34th Council for what you have done.
Thank you, Council President. I have to say, I'll be really remiss if I don't mention two last people. Tim Hawkins, fabulous guy. I mean, his team's out there, these water main breaks. I mean, he's a champion. I mean, keep an eye out for your mailbox. Proclamation's coming, brother. And the second person, you know, is Chief Esashin, who is doing a great job. I mean, you talk about, you know, great people in great positions. This guy right here, you know, when I, Chief, hopefully, you know, we get confused because I've been losing my hair since I took this job. Hopefully, though.
You're a lovely guy.
Hey, Chief, thank you. And again, you guys, just speaks to the caliber of service residents are getting. You know, you're getting a police chief, fully staffed, fully funded. I mean, that's a mandate the mayor came in with. That's awesome. You got an amazing director of Tim Hawkins, who's just out there. I mean, whatever it is, he's Mr. Fixit. And everybody's favorite community liaison, Sylvia Davis.
That's right.
So thank you again, folks, really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank both our reps. And again, you know, as everybody knows, you're only good as the team that surrounds you. So the mayor has done a great job of picking good quality people. So thank you. Esashin?
It feels good to be back in this room.
Just say your name.
Hussein Hashan, Court Street, Dearborn. It feels good to be back in this room. First and foremost, Council President Sarini, honorable city council members, Mr. Mayor, Corporation Council, City Clerk, and my fellow Dearborn residents, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for this recognition, especially to Councilman Elsawafi for taking the lead on this. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah!
That's my son, Mohammed.
You agree.
Through my tours in different states and different cities, we've been recognized. Our work has been recognized and acknowledged, but it feels different coming from your own and coming from people that you know and you worked with, from friends and family. So again, thank you for this recognition. I'll be remiss if I don't mention the back one of our work, which is our team. Maybe I'm the face of the company, but we have a great team behind us. One of them is Jamil, who's here today. My father, as the mayor mentioned, he has a cooking show and he just released a cooking book in English, which is, we're going to have a book signing for him soon, and all of you are invited to it. Also, my brother, who travels with me all the time. And we have other members who are not able to be here today. I want to just mention their names, Zainaf Faraj, Zakaria, Mohammed Khalir, Rida, and other people who are, are working tirelessly to deliver the news. And, you know, WhatsApp media.
Yeah!
Sorry about that. I'll make it quick, so. This is the perk of having a boy, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
The girls are actually quiet and stuff. This is, this is what, but generally speaking, I just want to mention WhatsApp media. The goal of starting this was to provide resources, information, and news to the community in a very independent and trusted way. And now millions, especially Arab-speaking Americans across different states and cities, especially in Dearborn and the local area, they consider us as their trusted source of information. When they're looking for resources, information, and news, whether on a local issue, state or national issue, this is the first place where they look at. So again, thank you so much for their recognition. We're going to continue. Anywhere I go, I always tell them, when they ask me, where are you from? The first thing I say, I'm from Dearborn. And if they ask from, from, I say, I'm from Ainatine, Lebanon. And I'm proud to be a great ambassador for the city. Whenever I go, even when I was in Dubai, the Minister of Cabinet Affairs, he's like, where are you from? And I'm like, from Dearborn. And I was very happy when he said, oh, I know that city. You guys have the best kinaifa. I didn't ask him where did he eat at, but we are nationally and internationally recognized for our food and the great people that we have. Lastly, I want to recognize my family, my mom and my dad, who are the backbone of everything that I do. Also, my wife, she was, you know, covering for us and leading the way in daycare. So thank you so much. And my two daughters, Fatima and Noor, they're famous, too, if you want to take pictures with them.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mohammed. Thank you so much, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Take your time. Take your time. All right. Anyone else here to address the council regarding city business? Okay, any cards? All right. So, Mr. Clerk, we will close the public comment portion at 7:31. And before we move to our consent agenda, are there any items that any member would like to wish to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? Councilman Perez?
If I could, Council President, I appreciate it. I think Agenda Item Number 22 that we put on the consent agenda, the property owner is here, if I believe, entertain anything from your perspective, if anything else needs to be discussed.
Oh, no, that's, I'm glad. Yeah, no, we did, if he could, made it today, which is great. No, I think we're good for it. We're good for it. So yeah, if he was here, we appreciate you attending. I know you were ill Thursday. No, we just want to get you, get you started so you could build your home, but we appreciate you doing attending. Yeah, no need to come up. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Clerk, everything will remain as stated at the committee of the whole for the council agenda. So can you go ahead and, number nine, you would have to read that, right?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution in need of offer and support approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
All right. We have an offer by Councilman Hamud and a support by Councilman Enos. Questions or comments? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
We have seven yeas, the resolution passes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
So we'll move on to item number 24.
Yes.
Resolution by Councilmembers Enos and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of January 8th, 2025.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Hearing and seeing none. A unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number 25, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Perez approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of January 14th, 2025.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Hearing and seeing none. A unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 26, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 24-1835, an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by adding Chapter 20, Section 20-1 to 20-6, entitled Transition Following an Election. Resolution by Council President Serini and Council President Brotem Herrick, supported by Councilmember Perez, to take from the table for its final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. A unanimous roll shall be attached, to take from the table for its final reading. Currently, there is no established procedure in the city to prepare newly elected officials with a transition process to office following the election. The proposed ordinance creates a formal transition process for newly elected officials by establishing a transition period beginning the day after the election has been certified by the Board of State Canvassers and lasting through January 1st of the year immediately following the election. Number two, there's a creation of a transition officer who is responsible for holding orientation and informational meetings for mayor-elect, council members-elect, and clerk-elect. Establishing an office of mayor-elect, council members-elect, and clerk-elect is the third point. And fourthly, requiring newly elected officials to be provided with the budget, contact information of appointees and positions of appointees, identification of appointed positions, contract information of currently, for, I'm sorry, contact information of currently elected officials, most, as well as budget and several other city comprehensive financial reports as well, all to be provided to the incoming elected officials. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. I wanted to thank our legal department. This is something that I had brought towards the end of last election when I spoke with the mayor, explaining to him that in the charter, it indicated there's a transition, but we really didn't state a specific process or how this was to happen. And, you know, we've been very fortunate in Dearborn to have few mayors, a few council people, not a lot of turnover. But when it does turn over, then people start saying, well, how does the process go? So for me, I thought this was something that was definitely needed. I worked with the legal department to have a framework, but still have some vagueness as if so it could work. But someone that is coming into the office on January 1st as the mayor or the council should not come in on January 1st and have to get a badge and have to find out where the door is. And this lays out a good comprehensive process, allows for the autonomy of the currently elected official to serve out his term or her term without affecting them, but also allows some basic information that you can get and begin the process going. So I think formalizing this was, was something a long time coming, and I wanted to thank the legal department for all their efforts. Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1835, an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by adding Chapter 20, Section 20-1 to 20-6, entitled Transition Following an Election.
All right. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item 27, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 25-1836, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 18, entitled 1A Light Industrial District, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. A unanimous roll shall be attached, to take from the table for its final reading. The Light Industry District has primarily been a warehousing district, which is, has a difficult, is very difficult to repurpose and for other uses. While it's intended that the Dearborn's district will go through a more comprehensive overhaul after the completion of our master plan, it is recommended at this time that the ordinance be modified to allow indoor recreational as a special land use in the IA district. Structures that best suited for indoor recreational facilities such as indoor soccer field are also those designed as an open expansive warehouse concept. In addition to being a special land use, there's also specific site development standards that apply to indoor recreation facilities that will help ensure appropriate sites are selected. Those standards are as follows. They shall have a minimum of 50 feet setback from any property line that abuts residential district. The location, design, and operation of the indoor recreation use shall not adversely affect and the continued use and enjoyment of developed adjacent properties as well, and shall direct access onto major thoroughfare. This is recommended, was recommended and approved by our planning commission at their public hearing on December 10th, 2024, and this is the second and final reading. At this time, I wanted to see if my colleagues had anything to bring forward, but I thank the department and the Planning Division for bringing these forth. These are things that folks, as things have changed in Dearborn, where everything was office, everything was warehousing, and that has changed dramatically. It's the difference between us going ahead and setting the table for new businesses to come forward as opposed to them bringing them after they get in and trying to make changes. So this is a welcome change. And I know there's going to be more to come, and I know there's, the master plan will also help clarify some of these issues that we're having in uses, right, that are not being used today, just different type of uses. So everyone knows businesses are based on the actual use, what are the use of the business. So when you do have warehousing and that's gone, you end up making the building obsolete, obsolete. And now we can actually do something with it. So that's a, it's a good thing to see in Dearborn. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1836, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 18, entitled IA Light Industrial District.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the roll?
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilman Enos.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item 28, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 25-1837, an ordinance to amend the nuisance chapter, Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 13-5.3, entitled Dust Control, Paved, Partially Paved, Unpaved, and Storage Lots, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos to take the table, the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. A unanimous roll shall be attached, to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment removes a notice of violation or NOV as required to issue a ticket when a violator has received an NOV for the same violation in the last 18 months. The ordinance currently makes, the current version of the ordinance makes issuance of an NOV a requirement in order to assess a violation. The fugitive dust ordinance is one of two ordinances that addresses fugitive dust, the other being the more recently adopted bulk storage ordinance that regulates track out onto the roads of fugitive dust and airborne materials from unpaved and paved or partially paved storage lots. Violations are punishable by a civil infraction with an escalating fine beginning at $1,000 and increasing for repeat offenders up to $2,500. For a fourth violation within 12 months, then becomes punishable as a misdemeanor. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this ordinance?
Yeah.
Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the administration and, of course, the council working together to strengthen the ordinances that we have in place and then look for creative solutions through ordinances and other means to make quality of life, improve quality of life, especially in the areas where we have heavy industry, like tracking out dust and dirt or dust that's coming off of trucks. That's one step that we can take as a local government, where a lot of the state laws and federal laws that impact how businesses, the pollution they emit and that kind of thing, it's left up to the state and federal. So this is something we can do at the local level, and I'm proud that our council has supported doing this. Over the last few years, we've put a couple of these ordinances in place, in addition to doing things that even residents can do to help improve their air quality, like planting trees and making sure that there's green space to help clean the air through natural means. So thank you to administration and all of my colleagues on council for supporting this ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Herrick. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1837, an ordinance to amend the nuisance chapter, Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 13-5.3, entitled Dust Control, Paved, Partially Paved, Unpaved, and Storage Lots.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the roll?
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Council President, if I may.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mine says to table. My agenda is that, so I just want to make sure one of, that's final reading, that, yes, it is the final.
This was the final reading. I, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that was a mistake on that, on that paper. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rollman. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you continue? Item 29?
Item number 29, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Elsawafi, authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate a donation from Ford World Headquarters in the amount of $1,000 to the West Dearborn Downtown Development Authority toward the Dearborn Coffee Week event expenditures and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The West Downtown Authority, Development Authority received a donation of $1,000 from Ford World Headquarters towards the Dearborn Coffee Week event. It is respectfully requesting that the finance director be authorized to recognize and appropriate the donation for the Dearborn Coffee Week expenditures. Immediate effect is being requested. Of course, I'd like to thank Ford World Headquarters for their generous donation. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 30, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Elsawafi approving to lease and enter into a whole harmless agreement with East Michigan Avenue Holding LLC and MSR Holding LLC for the use of approximately 111 square feet of outdoor city-owned space located at the adjacent 14200 Wesley Street parking lot for the installation and maintenance of a trash dumpster enclosure for the term of five years from February 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2030, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This, the proposed agreement outlines a lease between the City of Dearborn and the lease East Michigan, East Michigan Avenue Holdings for the addresses of 13901 Michigan Avenue and MSR Holding 1319 Michigan Avenue. The agreement pertains to lease to approximately 111 square feet of space within the adjacent city-owned parking lot of 14,200, oh, how do you pronounce that, George? Wiley Street?
Wel, Wellesley.
Wellesley Street. Just want to make sure. To install and maintain trash dumpster enclosure for a sanitation needs of both of the businesses. Due to the sanitation requirements of both businesses, the use of the dumpster is necessary as neither party has onsite dumpster access. Both businesses have requested to lease the space and install and maintain a dedicated trash dumpster enclosure for their exclusive use. Under the proposed lease, the business will pay a base rent of $222 yearly with a adjusted consumer price index as well as administrative fee of $200. For the installation of trash, of the trash dumpster enclosure, the leasing must, must obtain all necessary permits, inspections, and approvals at their sole cost and expense. This lease agreement shall be for a period of five years commencing February 1st, 2025 and terminating on January 31st, 2030 with immediate effect. This is something, again, I like to thank the mayor and the administration. There is a lot of smaller businesses that do not conform with today's requirements and standards, smaller coffee shops, baker shops, or that have involved into more and more product, now we need trash collection aspect and do not have it. So for some of our residents that are looking at, hey, $400, this is equivalent of what it costs to rent a parking spot. But then it allows the, the business owner to actually build with a concrete slab and a retainer, a dumpster enclosure, which will keep everything much more tidy, cleanliness, and also help with any rodent issues whatsoever. So this is a great partnership, and I do appreciate this for being brought forward. And I know that we're doing it throughout the city where it, where it is equitable for some of the businesses that actually need it. So. Any other questions or comments? A unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number 31, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Elsawafi approving contract number 24-5576 with the Michigan Department of Transportation in order to obtain a grant in the amount of $500,000 for pedestrian pathway improvements. Also authorizing the mayor to execute the contract on behalf of the city and the finance director to accept the grant when received and to authorize the corresponding revenue budget and appropriations and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We had both our state reps here earlier to speak on this. State Rep Alabas Farhat has sponsored a grant in the amount of $500,000 for the City of Dearborn for pedestrian pathway improvements for the purpose of sidewalk pedestrian safety improvements, including raised sidewalks, increased signage, and visibility striping. The Engineering Division will prepare the plans for raised sidewalks locations as well as inspection of the project to comply with MDOT contract specifications. The project will, will involve removing and replacing concrete pavement sidewalks and sidewalk ramps. It is requested that the council approve the attached MDOT contract 24-5576 with the City of Dearborn regarding the grant in the amount of $500,000 and to authorize the mayor to execute the contract on behalf of the city. It is further requested that the finance director be authorized to accept the grant when received and authorize the corresponding revenue and budget appropriations. There's no local match requirement to our taxpayers, so this is fully funded, and this item shall be given immediate effect. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay. A unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 32, resolution by councilmembers Perez and Herrick awarding a contract to laser striping and sports surfacing in the amount of $90,900 for the installation of pickleball courts at Ford Woods Park. Also authorizing the finance director to transfer the current funding in the amount of $100,000 from the Facility Fund to the General Capital Improvement Fund, Project I 50725, and to recognize and appropriate the transfer and requesting immediate effect.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Parks and Recreation Department is expanding its pickleball offerings for the city by converting an inland rink at Fordwood Park into seven new regularly-sized pickleball courts. So this is very popular and, and growing. The location was carefully chosen as it is, it has existing fencing, lights, and the proximity to seasonal restrooms, and it's distance from, oh, yeah, we have it on the screen there, and it's distance from residential homes because this does bring some, some noise to it. Benses are also be added, and upon completion of this product, the city will, the City of Dearborn will now have 11 pickleball courts in total. Parks and Recreation Department, in conjunction with purchasing, recommends on awarding the contract to laser striping and sport resurfacing for the development of these seven pickleball courts at Fordwoods Park. It is also requested that the finance director be authorized to transfer $100,000 in current funding from the Facility Fund to the General Capital Improvement Fund, Project I 50725, and to recognize and appropriate the transfer. Construction of the new courts will begin in the spring of 2025. Any questions or comments on this? Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Council President. What I wanted to bring up about this is, yeah, it's the subject of pickleball. I mean, really, but think about it. A lot of our seniors, a lot of our residents enjoy the game of pickleball. You have to go to the Performing Arts Center, go outside, and then be brought in during the inclement weather. It's very difficult for some of the seniors, for people to partake in this rising sport of pickleball. Could it be a fad? Let's see what happens in the future. But the thing is, and the point that was brought up, a number of people and a number of seniors have approached me about the pickleball and expanding it, you know, to some of the other parks. But consideration does have to be made to the area residential area. And I'll just throw an example out at you. Love a good park. You got the tennis courts there, but it's budding directly right next to a residential home and homes across the street. By having people there doing that, and it is a little bit noisy at times, that it could interfere with the neighborhoods around them. So to have the fortitude to look for an area and expand resources that we already have and to have something like this with these additional courts, I think it's, it's a good addition, and maybe we can look in the future for other opportunities also. But this is very good, and I appreciate this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So see, we're going to have 13, not 11 by the summer.
All right, good.
You forgot to tune the South End.
Is there two more going in the South End?
Yeah, and the Peace Park in the South
Yeah, in the peace park and the south end, we'll have two.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions or other, other questions or comments? The unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item 33, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Inos awarding a single-source contract to Surf Pro in the amount of $45,000 for inspections of Camp Dearborn trailers and sites to comply with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, also known as Eagle, their laws and regulations, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. In 2023 and in prior years, it has been a standard practice for Camp Dearborn administrative staff to perform and document inspections of mobile homes and trailers in a seasonal campground, Section TV 2 of Camp Dearborn. Responsibility includes inspections for safety issues as well as compliance with Eagle laws and regulations, as well as documenting any site apparent issues in the summer of 2024 at the direction of the City Council and administration. Recreation work with purchasing department to obtain a third-party provider to complete the site inspections at TV 2 with more consistency. Parks and Recreation Department in conjunction with purchasing is recommending an award of a contract to Surf Pro to conduct inspections of Camp Dearborn trailers and camp sites as required by Eagle. The requested amount is $45,000 with the majority of the cost being assessed to each trailer owner. So, I know we had some questions or comments for, for purchasing, so, Mr., Mark, would you go ahead and give us a little bit example of what, what transpired on this account?
Good evening, Council. Mark Ruzinsky, purchasing manager. Just a little background info on this one. This solicitation went out to bid twice. Surf Pro was the sole bidder on the second solicitation. Parks and Rec requested $20,000 at that time for this project. About two months later, this request came in to add 25,000, which puts it over council threshold, which is why we're here today.
Okay, so that, that was the question, I think, that we didn't have a clear answer in the beginning.
Yes, sir.
So, originally, the bid was substantially lower, almost 60% below the threshold. It came out higher because we had added more to it.
Correct. It's not that the bid was lower, it's that the requested amount from the department was only the 20,000.
And then now it expanded?
Correct, correct, to do additional trailers, yes.
So, I, we just want to make sure, because there was a lot of questions regarding that at that time.
Yes, sir. So, at that time, the contract was completed for $20,000, and then we're here to request an additional 25,000, which puts it over threshold.
Yep, absolutely. All right, any questions or comments on this item?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much.
All right, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item 34, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Hamud, authorizing a cooperative contract purchase from Lung Hammer Ford via the 2024 Vehicle State of Michigan Cooperative Contract and McComb Contract Alternate in the total amount of $592,600 for the purchase of 11 vehicles for the Department of Public Works and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Department of Public Works, the DPW, is responsible for maintaining critical city infrastructure, including roads, water and sewer systems, public parks, and waste management. To effectively execute these responsibilities, DPW relies on a fleet of specialized vehicles purchasing on behalf of the DPW. Recommends a cooperative contract purchase of 11 vehicles from Lung Hammer Ford. The pricing of the vehicles based on the 2024 Vehicle State Michigan Myideal Contract as well as the McComb Contract Alternate. The total requested amount for all the vehicles is $592,600, and immediate effect is being requested as lead time for these vehicles could be up to four months, which is a lot better. It's getting shorter. It used to be, it used to be a year, so four months is not bad. Any questions or comments on these? All right, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Council President, the Finance Department has requested to withdraw this item.
Okay, thank you. This item withdrawn. Next item.
Item number 36, resolution by councilmembers Elso Wafi and Paris awarding a cooperative contract to Pentura LLC via the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract in the amount of $998,886 for the creation of an inclusive playground at Lepire Park.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Parks and Recreation Department is bringing, bringing forward an exclusive playground for Lepire Park through the Community Development Block grant funding. The, I can't even pronounce this one, Volier Sources? Is that how you pronounce that? Well, is to, yes? All right, great. Is to a three-story tower. I think we have some pictures of this as well, too, so we could, there you go. So, this is a three-story, a story, a story tower that is accessible to the very top thanks to a winding path made of voluntary flex steel reinforced net. It is also packed with events to keep kids engaged and delighted at every turn. The Salina School themed playground will also include strategically placed sales shade sensory play center with three panels and a communication board, a variety of benches we go around as well, and a Salina School themed Wildcat Digger Rider. We got a picture of that?
A little bungy thing in the front.
Okay. All right, that's even better.
Not bad for you.
Parks and Rec Department is in conjunction with purchasing is recommending an award with Pentura LLC for the creation of this exclusive playground at Lepire Park. Pricing of the playground is based on a sole well cooperative contract in the amount of Construction will begin on spring of 2025 and will be completed by July of 2025. So, tremendous work for our department. I know, Mayor, you have, we've been working on these things for the parks, tremendous amount of reinvestment into our community, and these things are, will well pass its useful life. Some of the stuff was well over 30, 50 years old, so the fact that we're getting not only this, this company, Director, if you'd like to come forward?
Yeah.
This company, too, I think they've designed a few of the other ones as well.
Yes, this is the same company that's designing, that was awarded the contracts over at Crowley and Ford Woods. And I think with the inclusion of the one at Lepire Park, the goal at this point was that all families across the City of Dearborn would be within a 10-minute drive of a fully inclusive playscape. And so, it's a total of $4 million of investment in these three playscapes. They have obviously a life of several decades, and it just adds to our commitment to ensuring inclusive playgrounds and parks all across our city.
Thank you, Mayor. And then, Director, I know we were there for the opening at Crowley. I mean, if you haven't been there, I know if you could just speak on it a little bit, that the amount of, from the playscapes that I grew up with, some of those would kill people nowadays with the way they, right, Gary? The stuff that they have today and the, the way that they are designed are so much user-friendly, but if you could speak a little bit about Crowley, because to me, this company has performed and outperformed on every aspect that they, that I have seen, from drawing to actual implementation has been phenomenal.
Yes, good evening, Council. Sean Fletcher, Parks and Recreation Director. So, Crowley Park, that was a custom design by Pentura, and I remember floating some ideas out to them, and they worked with their designers. That's how we ended up with the, like, the four-by-four monster truck, which, you know, I've been to a lot of parks throughout my career, I've never seen anything quite like that, so it's very unique. I think this company, and they're not the only company, but park designers have really capitalized on the footprint. And so, there's multiple spots and things throughout the playground that you can visit in addition, obviously, to the, you know, climbing up to the third level and down. And I, one of the things that I think is great, that it used to be, there was this huge focus on, well, we don't want people to fall, you know, people have to be safe. The poured-in-place surface, you know, gives us a little bit more cushioning, which we have at that playground. In addition, I think the designers have been really good about allowing kids to take a little bit of a risk, too, which I think is good, because it develops that upper body strength, confidence, so.
Yeah, well, we really do, do appreciate that, and it is good when you see the vision compared to where it's at today, so we do appreciate it.
This one, this one we're getting, the new one you just saw, you know, that was super top secret for about a month. We had to keep the mayor off of social media with that one because it was a super top-secret design, hadn't been released. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty cool to, to work with them, and they're very responsive, very helpful, and their installation companies, I think, is second to none.
Ford Woods will be completed by the spring, and this will be completed by the summer.
All right, we look forward to being there for the, the opening. That'd be great.
See you at the top.
Absolutely. Councilman Elso Wafi, I can get up there.
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Wafi, you're on that.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I just, I just want to say I'm happy to see the expansion of these inclusive playgrounds, and I want to specifically thank the administration and the Parks and Recreation Department under the leadership of Director Sean Fletcher. You've been outstanding with this, and I just want to remind people that three years ago, we had zero fully inclusive playgrounds in the City of Dearborn, and families would have to drive 30 minutes plus to cities like Ann Arbor that might have a fully inclusive playground. And I know that I was very passionate about this, and it was a priority for me. One of the first conversations I had with Director Fletcher was about bringing in a fully inclusive playground, but worked really well with them, with the mayor and administration, and we got one in, and now we got three in, and I believe this really speaks to the values of Dearborn where everybody, regardless of ability, can enjoy our parks. So, thank you so much for making this a priority as well.
The other thing I would say, if you weren't at the Crowley Grand opening to see some of the smiles on those kids' faces.
Yeah, priceless.
And that, that's as powerful as it gets, and I expect the same thing, you know, when we open the new.
Yeah, absolutely.
I messed up and told my daughter there's a dragonfly park coming, the one at Ford Woods.
Yeah.
And till this day, she asks me why it's there.
It's going to be fun. And, you know, just to get to the council as well as the mayor, the council had, had Blue Hands United, we had some people come in, and we had a council meeting. This is, folks, what you, real legislation and real work for a city. When you talk about city, when you actually bring in residents, and they tell you why they need it, how they have to go, how far they have to go, and then coming up with the ideas, and then financial if we can actually make it work. And since we were already pushing a tremendous amount, as many people remember, we took $10 million of ARPA money into $30 million into our infrastructure with the mayor's vision. We were very fortunate to get our state and county partners, so this is what really happens on the local level, when you get involved at the local level and bring in the stakeholders. This is what we get at the end, so I can't wait to see it. It's going to be great. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Two comments. First, as, as we were talking about giving more opportunities to people with other abilities, just like to remind the public that there's an opportunity, if you'd like to get more involved in planning and providing programming for people with various abilities, we have a Commission on Disability Concerns that meets on a regular basis, and if you're interested in serving on that commission or just attending their meetings and giving input because you have thoughts on how the city might better serve people with other needs, please attend those meetings, reach out to the mayor's office, or visit the city website to look up information on, on that commission or other commissions where you might get involved. Regarding the playscape, I just had a question about the long-term upkeep and maintenance of this new equipment. Is that part of the contract, or how does that work?
So, there, there will be, obviously, a manufacturer's warranty on some of the pieces, but the long-term maintenance and inspection and care would be on us. But this piece, I wouldn't, unlike some of the 20 to 25-year-old equipment that we have that we can't get parts for, I would expect that this equipment would be around for a long time, and we'll inspect it annually, but we shouldn't have a lot of money to be spent for, for a while.
And that's the normal course that we do with all the rest of it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? The unanimous rule shall be attached. Thank you, Director. Next item.
Item 37, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud, accepting the National Endowment for the Arts Grant Award in the amount of $20,000 and authorizing the Finance Director to recognize the same revenue to be used for theater programming tailored for Arab-American youth through the Dearborn Youth Theater and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn Youth Theater, a nonprofit established in 2016, fosters creative growth and development among young people in the City of Dearborn as well as Dearborn Heights. With a focus on inclusivity, the Dearborn Youth Theater provides theater and performing arts opportunities regardless of the socioeconomic status or prior experience. This request is to accept and recognize $20,000 in grant funding from the National Endowment of the Arts, or NEA, to support theater programming at the Dearborn Youth Theater. The grant money will be used to hire three program team members and execute three tailored theater sessions, offsetting the cost of some operations and programming expenses as well. There's no local match, and immediate effect is being requested. So, we do appreciate this. Any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item 38, resolution by councilmembers Inos and Herrick granting the request of Trivium Southeast Michigan Running Series to conduct their Dearborn Decades 5K Run on Saturday, August 3rd, 2025, from approximately 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM with assistance from the Police Department for Traffic Safety Crowd Control for the entire duration of the event, subject to reimbursement for city services, subject to all applicable ordinances and the rules and regulations of the Police Department, also granting a noise waiver for the duration of the event and authorizing to place barricades at Monroe Street and South Brady Street as well as Morley Avenue and South Brady Street and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The City of Dearborn, a partnership with Trivium Southeast Michigan Running Series, plans to host a Dearborn Decades 5K Run on Sunday, August 3rd during the Homecoming Festival of 2025. The course will begin at the Lower Ford Field Park and turn down south on Brady and continue onto the Rouge Gateway, Great, I'm sorry, Gateway Trail. Community Relations and Dearborn Police Department are seeking permission to place barricades at various locations throughout for the safety of the residents, and the participants will begin at 7:00 AM till 10:00 AM on Sunday, August 3rd, 2025. This will allow for a fun, affordable, and active event to take place on the Sunday of Homecoming weekend. A noise waiver and immediate effect is also being requested. Any questions or comments on this? All right. The unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item 39, resolution by councilmembers Elso Wafi and Herrick granting the request of the Community Relations Department in conjunction with the Dearborn Ally War Veterans Council to conduct its 99th Annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 26, 2025, from 7:00 AM until approximately 2:00 PM on Michigan Avenue from Shafer Road to Southville Freeway, subject to all applicable ordinances and the rules and regulations of the Police Department, also authorizing the use of enclosure of Maple Road from Shafer Road to Michigan Avenue as well as use of the city-owned parking lots as follows, John Nagy Parking Lot, Dearborn Fresh Parking Lot, Calhoun Parking Lot, and also authorizing the use of the Veterans Park and War Memorial and granting a noise waiver for the duration of the event and for the Community Relations Department to place event-related and directional signage on city-owned property and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The City of Dearborn, our request to carry on its annual tradition representing Michigan's longest-running 99th Memorial Day Parade in the honor of those who've lost their lives while serving our country. This request includes a closure of public roads as well as the use of city-owned lots to execute the parade safely and successfully. We plan to move the parade back to its longstanding location in downtown East Dearborn for 2025. There is no planned road construction along this historic route, and that's why we are returning. The Department of Community Relations plans to seek sponsorships to help cover the costs of the parade and its associated events in addition to the allocated budget. The City of Dearborn's Department of Communications, Community Relations, I'm sorry, and Public Works and the police request permission of the Dearborn City Council to conduct this 99th Annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 26, 2025, with immediate effect and a noise waiver as well. So, any questions or comments on this? Glad to have it back at the original location, so hopefully that will help bring us back some, I know we had a lot of construction in the past, so we had to move it, so this will bring it back to, any flyby, or is that top secret, too?
We're about to have Sad Baydoo's pocket service.
Sad Baydoo, I don't know if we're going to get it if it's up there. I'll tell you what, I mean, the flybys are something, folks, our parade is phenomenal, those that align the streets. It's a great time, very, very well-run, very timely, and a lot of participants.
It's going to happen right before all of that Michigan Avenue will be replaced with construction this year.
That's great. So, hopefully, Mayor, I'm sure you got some video coming out for that one, but we need a flyby.
We're working on it.
All right. Any questions or comments? The unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item 40, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize the Michigan Arts and Culture Council Grant Award in the amount of $12,000 and appropriate the same to be used for programming that promotes health, arts, and culture, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Michigan Arts and Culture Council has awarded the City of Dearborn Department of Public Health Grant Funds in the amount of $12,000 to host programming that promote public health, art, and culture. This grant will allow the Department of Public Health to collaborate with other city departments and community partners to host engaging, informative, and accessible programming that public, that promotes public health, art, and culture. Events and activities will be geared towards the general Dearborn population as well as populations, including children, families, older adults, and individuals with disabilities. Immediate effect is being requested. The award period goes through September 30th, 2025. Director, thank you for being here.
Thanks, Council President.
Thanks, Council President. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Health. I just wanted to say that my public health advisor, Sarah Hassan, the credit is, belonged to her. This is a project that my fellows last summer came to me with, and it's yet another example of there's no discipline or field that we won't excavate to save the taxpayer some funds. So we have some ideas of how we're gonna spend these funds. We've been in touch with the Parks Department about some programming over there at the Civic Center, so we'll keep the public posted.
Well, we do appreciate it, and we do appreciate all the social media, air quality updates. It really does make a difference. Mayor, this is, Mayor's, from the beginning, his public health look in everything that we do at the city has really shown, now that we're getting close to, you know, three years going on four, I really appreciate the job you did. I know when you came in, you were Department of One. I know it's grown slightly, but the fellows and the work that you've done has showed that the grants have come through, and the work has, has helped people. That's what we're here for. So we do appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director. Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 41, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize a donation from the Floyd L. and Mary Dietrich Hite Charitable Trust in the amount of $9,487.60, in account number 271-5000-365.90-00, and appropriate the same in account 271-5000-711.10-20, to be used for the museum archives, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Floyd Hite was a chairman of the Dearborn Historical Commission from 1939 to 1951, and then again from 1956 to 1975. The Floyd and Mary Dietrich Hite Charitable Trust was created in the 1980s and provides an annual contribution that is specified to be used towards the Dearborn Historical Museum Archives. This item is to recognize and appropriate the receipt of $9,487.60 as a donation from the charitable trust to the Dearborn Historical Museum. The donation is stipulated to be used for the museum archives. We would like to thank them for their continued support and contribution. Any questions or comments on this? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 42, resolution by councilmember Enos, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Thomas P. Coughlin, and requesting immediate effect.
Councilman Enos?
Thomas P. Coughlin was born on March 15, 1922, and sadly passed away on December 7, 2024, at the age of 102. Affectionately known as Tommy, he was respected, a respected community member and pillar of Dearborn. Tommy was the devoted husband of the late Eva Coughlin. He was a loving father of Kelly Clem, Tom, Jill Coughlin, and he was the beloved grandfather of five grandchildren, Gina, Emily, Brennan, Ryan, and Alex. Tommy was also an uncle to many nieces and nephews. Tommy was preceded in death by his siblings, Peter Coughlin, Eileen Wright, and John Coughlin. Tommy was born in Waterford, Ireland, and immigrated to the United States with his mother and siblings in 1926 at four years old. He was a proud World War II Navy veteran, serving his country from 1942 to 1946. He served in both the Atlantic and Pacific Theaters in World War II. Tommy moved to Dearborn in 1976, where he raised his family. In his civilian life, he used his skills as a New York Central, Pennsylvania, and Crown Rail locomotive train engineer, which was his primary career. He also worked for a while as a firefighter and an insurance salesman. Tommy was known as a true Irishman, always having a big smile on his face. He was known for his storytelling, sense of humor, and his generous nature. He was the type of man who would give the shirt off his back to help someone in need. In March of 2022, Tommy celebrated his 100th birthday with a celebratory drive-by parade near his home in Dearborn. Many families, friends, and City of Dearborn residents and staff, including Mayor Hamud, city council members, and police and firemen, appeared at the drive-by to wish Tommy a very 100th happy birthday. Tommy will be remembered for his happy, joyful, and humorous personality in the Dearborn community. He will be dearly missed. To all, we offer our most heartfelt sympathy and sincere condolence.
Thank you, Councilman Enos. And a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 43, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Alswafi, authorizing to renew the citywide annual membership with the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $19,405 for the period of December 1, 2024, through November 30, 2025, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This item is a request by the mayor to authorize to renew the citywide membership with the Michigan Municipal League, or MML, for a period of December 1, 2024, through November 30, 2025. The cost of the citywide membership is $19,405. The membership dues for 2025 are budgeted in our citywide account, and is immediate effect is being requested. This is a great organization that the council, as well as I think many other members of our city, uses for information regarding what cities are doing, and how we're lobbying, and what things we're doing to back to the state, as well as many other key training events that they hold as well. Any questions or comments on this? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 44, resolution by councilmembers Samud and Alswafi, concurring in the appointment of Yusuf Mohamed to the Planning Commission, with the term ending June 30, 2025, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is an appointment for Yusuf Mohamed to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. The term ending shall, shall end June 30, 2025. This is to complete one year from Jamal Al-Jahmi, who won election to the school board and had to vacate the seat. Any questions or comments? I know there were some questions that we had regarding the resume which we received. I want to thank, thank for the information. I do know this person. I wasn't sure about his, wasn't sure because it's a common name. When I did call him, it wasn't the right guy. So tremendous, tremendous young man, very, very honorable, and does a tremendous lot of construction in Dearborn the right way, knows the rules, and I think he's gonna be a great asset to the Planning Commission. So we're gonna thank him for his service. Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 45, resolution by councilmembers Sereni and Abraham, concurring in the appointment of Khalid Abdullah to the Planning Commission, with the term ending June 30, 2028, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is a, this item is for an appointment of Khalid Abdullah to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, ending June 30, 2028. And again, we would like to thank all our commissioners that do their volunteer work that really helps our city. Any questions or comments? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 46, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Paris, concurring in the appointment of Sinan Sala to the Board of Review, with a term ending January 1, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Clerk. This is to appoint Sinan Sala to the Board of Review for a three-year term. The term will be ending June 30, 2025. A one-year, this is a one-year to complete Alan Berry's term, who vacated the seat, and then she would be up for reappointment at that time. Councilman Alswafi?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, all our appointees are worthy of recognition, but I just wanted to take a moment to highlight the appointment of Sinan, also known as Simon Sala, to the Board of Review. As an experienced real estate broker, marketing specialist, and business leader, Simon brings a wealth of knowledge and expertise to this role. His passion for community service and his commitment to helping businesses grow make him an excellent addition to the board. We're grateful for his willingness to serve and employ his experience to benefit our community. I'm confident that Simon's unique perspective and skills will be a valuable asset to the Board of Review. Mr. Sala, we wish you the best of luck.
Any other questions or comments? Unanimous roll should be attached. Before we go forward, Mr. Romer, just some cleanup that was brought to me by Councilman Abraham. Item 35 that was withdrawn, there was an offer and support, so we, let me see.
Yeah, so if there's an offer, they need to withdraw, or you can approve a motion to, the body can, to allow the withdrawal.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. Yeah, during the time it said it was withdrawn, I didn't look forward to it, so looked into it deeply. So Councilman Alswafi and Councilman Enos offered and supported this item that was withdrawn by the administration. Councilman Alswafi, did you withdraw your offer?
Yes.
Councilman Enos withdraws his support. So just for the record, Mr. Clerk, you do have that. That was a drawn item by both offer and supporting items.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, for that as well. All right, next item.
There are no other items on tonight's agenda.
All right, excellent. I have a few things. I know the chief is here. I just wanted to bring up a few retirements from some officers. And again, the social media for our city and our police department is letting us know. We do appreciate the service. We have a couple corporals and a sergeant, so I just wanted to see if the chief would like to set some words on the, just for the record, we have Jennifer, how do you pronounce her name? Janega, who was known to be involved in our Dearborn Animal Shelter, was field training officer, and actively involved in our police union and police charities. Corporal Janega has spent 25 years and is retiring, so we wanted to thank her for her service. We also have Corporal Mark, how do you pronounce?
Demilles?
Demilles. Served as patrol and investigation division, specialized in investigations related to auto theft. So we'd like to thank him again, 25 years of service and retirement. And then Sergeant David Fazario?
Fanazzo, sir.
Fanazzo, you got it. Part of our police department's tac team, specialized team patrol, but we don't have that anymore, right?
We do not.
Right. But he led our SWAT team, and SWAT sniper team, and building and field fleet coordination as well. So we do want to recognize these officers for their, their service. You know, they put their life on the line every day, and I wanted to make sure the chief was here just to recognize them, thanking them for their service and their retirements. Chief?
Thank you, Council President. Esa Shaheen, Chief of Police. Council President, thank you for taking the time to recognize their service. You know, for me to see people that I came up with leaving, it's kind of hard, bittersweet, but I wish them the very best in retirement. Very well-earned. They've served honorably here. Many of them worked on the road majority of their career, and really gave their very best to this community. So I'm proud of them, and wish them the best in retirement.
Thank you, Chief. And then we also had an unfortunate event with one of our dispatchers. Can you shed some light on that as well? We'd like to mention that as well.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to offer condolences to the family of Donald Ian Gettart. He was 50 years old, far too young, and he passed away unexpectedly on January 15, 2025, at his childhood home in Garden City, Michigan. He was born December 2, 1974, in Colorado Springs, Colorado. He was the son of Donald and Margaret Peggy Gettart. Donnie was survived by his wife Kristin Rose Gettart, who also works in the courts for us. His mother Peggy, and his children Amanda Simon, Gregory Miller, Kaylee, Gavin, and Ian Gettart. He's also was a cherished brother, uncle, cousin, and friend of many. He was a graduate of Garden City High School. Donnie was devoted to his life of public service. He held many positions and had distinguished roles with an auxiliary sergeant with the City of Inksters, Police Department Reserves. He was a police authority officer, a defensive tactic instructor. He later served as a police authority sergeant, field training officer, mountain bike patrol member at the Fairland Town Center. He worked here as an emergency police dispatcher for the city of Dearborn. He also served as the Police Dispatchers Union President, and I dealt with him many times on contract issues, and found him always to be conscientious, kind, and compassionate when I had to deal with, we had to work issues out. He was known for his leadership, compassion, his calm demeanor during crisis. He left a lasting legacy of service and dedication to others. His generous heart, dedication to his loved ones, and selfless service to his community will be deeply missed by all who knew him. I just wanted to make sure we.
Thank you very much, Chief. We do appreciate that. You know, life is very, very short, and we do appreciate that. Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much. Anything else from my colleagues on the council? Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to invite the public, and anybody here in the council chambers tonight, to attend the rededication of the Library Auditorium, the Henry Ford Centennial Library Auditorium. It was funded, renovations were funded in part by the Rotary Club of Dearborn, and the Rotary Club of Dearborn, when celebrating its 100th anniversary a couple years ago, did a major fundraiser and raised $70,000, which was used to help make the Library Auditorium more accessible to people with all needs. This included adding new chairs, improving technology, the sound system in the auditorium that's there. So the public's welcome to join us to celebrate with the Rotary Club of Dearborn on Monday, February 10, at 4:00 p.m. It'll be a brief ceremony and program and refreshments, probably between 4:00 and 5:00 p.m. We're looking forward to the mayor coming and making a few remarks. So as a member of the Rotary Club of Dearborn, I'd love to see everybody out to learn more about the good works being done by the Rotary Club in Dearborn and around the world, and to see what's happening at the Henry Ford Centennial Library.
Thank you, Councilman Herrick. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to bring up to, brought up the retirements. You know, I had the opportunity to go to the memorial for our dispatcher that passed. I just don't want to go in without being said, and I know the chief was very, very good about speaking about our dispatch family, public safety family, and so on. These public safety dispatchers anywhere, but here in particular, those of us that know some of the dispatchers and had some experience in the past, there are some unsung heroes that work amongst us. There are a lot of stress in that position, and it's, it's a position, too, that you just don't know what's going on. You'd like to reach out through that, that radio, or that phone, to try to help somebody, or an officer in need that's yelling for help, and they're there, they're dealing with it, but they can't see the end result. And I really feel a lot of compassion towards the dispatchers, and I really appreciate, you know, coming forward and saying the words that you did, chief. The family needs it, and it was very much so a part of this public safety family. I just wanted to make mention, too, of Jennifer Janika. You know, I remember her as a youngster, of course. Many may not know, too, her dad was a police officer in Dearborn, too, for not a long time, but even before I started on the Police Department, he served. But Jennifer was known throughout the community, the community, for her compassion towards animals in particular, helping out the friends for the animals of Metro Detroit. And a lot of families and people living in this city that knew her and actually reached out to her for some assistance or guidance, how do I? How do I do this? How do I do that? I have an animal in distress, what have you. So I just want to say a personal thanks, too, to Jennifer, and anybody that makes it through 25 years anymore, too, thank you for your service, very much so for the Police Department and our public safety team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And then, before I turn over to the administration, Mayor, I just wanted to mention our past Mayor O'Reilly's function Saturday, so I wanted to see if you could shed some light on the timeframe, and I know that it's been on our website.
Yeah, thank you so much. Obviously, we had the passing of former Mayor Jack O'Reilly, and I think on February 1, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. over at the Civic Center, there'll obviously be a public celebration of life. There are many individuals who are coming, people who have reached out, who want to share with the family all the stories that they had of our former mayor. And so really welcome the public. It's, it's open to all. Again, love to have you. It's Saturday, February 1, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and we coordinated this with the family. And so they're not to be surprised by anything.
No, I do appreciate it. I'm glad that you mentioned it, because the family, some people have asked, what is the city doing? The family requested this level of privacy, and, and so I do appreciate this, and what we're doing Saturday, those that can attend. It should be a great tribute to a man who dedicated most of all of his life to public service. So I just wanted to make sure we mentioned it. Thank you, Mayor. And anything from the administration?
I think the last thing I'll bring up is, a lot's been said, but next week, at the Daddy Daughter Dance, it's on Friday and Saturday. I believe, is it the 6th and 7th, or 7th and 8th?
Sold out?
Are they sold out?
Are we sold out yet?
I don't believe so. We have two days now. We typically have one. So we're trying to.
Yeah, but we did two days in the, last year, right?
No, one day last year. We typically sell out just to, yeah, last year we sold out.
These are hot tickets, guys.
Yeah, yeah. This is a greater commodity than the Super Bowl tickets are these days.
Oh, wow, juicy.
Yeah.
Yes.
With that said, go Eagles. I don't know.
Yes, I'm gonna go Eagles, too. NFC. Excellent, excellent. To, before we click, kick it over to, I just wanted to recognize, you know, we mentioned some of the people that are in sporting, watched the championship, national championship. We had two Dearborn young men on sideline on each side, one jawed young man who's a punter for the Ohio State, the winning team, and then our old colleague, council, previous council president, Tom Tavouski's son, and a graduate student at Notre Dame, was on that field as well for Notre Dame. So it's great to see young men and women of Dearborn achieving. I mean, there's a national championship at that level is a tremendous feat. So thank them for representing Dearborn, and look forward to their futures. Mr. Clerk, anything from your department?
We're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it to our second public comment portion. If there's anyone here to address the city council regarding city business, there's comment cards, and it also can be acknowledged by stepping forward and stating your name and address for the record. Hearing and seeing none. I entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Councilman Paris, motion to adjourn. It's the Councilman Herrick, motion to adjourn. I apologize.
Thank you.